Good evening, I'd like to call to order the January 12th, 2023, meeting of the Louisville Planning Commission. Thank you, you got that quiet, thanks. With a roll call, please.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner Hefner.
Here.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Krantz. Commissioner Troy.
Here.
Excellent, thank you very much. With that then, I entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion approved tonight's agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. With that then, I have requested that the minutes for November and December 2022 be revisited by staff for some clarifications. I don't know if anybody else has any clarifications they would like to discuss at this time for those minutes? Any, no, okay. So we will be revisiting approval of minutes next month. At this time, I'd like to open it up for comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. So if there's anybody, and if you can double check online for me, if there's anybody who wants to speak to items that are not on the season's agenda, we would invite you up at this time. Is there anybody online? I have no visibility right now.
I do not see any hands raised.
Great, thank you. With that then, we'll move into our, oh, we do have one other item this evening. I'm electing the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. I would entertain a motion for that, if we could.
Could you do one at a time, or do you do all?
I think you can do the whole slate. Right, yeah.
I would nominate, to keep everyone in their same positions, that would be Chairman Brown Eyes, Vice Chair Hefner, and Secretary Moline.
Thank you, can we get a second on that?
What second that?
Thank you very much, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes? Is that right? Approve.
Commissioner Hefner.
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Troy.
Aye.
There we go. And I would say it is great working with everybody on the commission, so. All right, with that then, we'll move into new business. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a second replat of the enclave, Resolution 1, Series 2023. And the purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card, use the raise hand function if participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Pooling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. Planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure that I've described? Seeing no objections, do we have notification?
We do, Chair. The project before you has been adequately and accurately noticed per City Municipal Code.
Excuse me, Chair Brown Eyes.
And then we ask for disclosures. Was there additional?
This is a little unconventional, and I just want to chime in real quick to let folks in the audience know that I'm seeing a number of folks in the audience who I believe are here for the third agenda item, which I plan to ask for a continuance. So I just wanted to pause everybody here before we get into the particulars for this first agenda item, that the Coal Creek Ranch filing 3, I intend to request a continuance, so that wouldn't be discussed tonight, just to give folks a chance to exit the meeting. We won't do the continuance now, we've opened the public hearing, but we're not prepared to talk about that tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so that will be continued likely till next month. But we'll get to the technicalities of that later, thanks, all right. Disclosures regarding this first item. Seeing none, invite your presentation, please.
Thank you so much, good evening Commissioners, I'm Elizabeth K. Marquetti, Senior Planner on behalf of city staff. As usual, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Also here this evening is Mr. Thomas Yarnell, he's the project applicant. He is one of the landowners and is making himself available for questions, and he'll also be making a presentation. The item before you is Resolution Number 1, Series 2023, which recommends conditional approval of a minor subdivision at 1214, 1216, 1220, 1222, and 1224 West Pine Court. This replat would turn four lots into two lots and adjust one other lot line. An easement vacation request will be presented to the city council along with this replat for final determination. This aerial photo shows the outline of the site in yellow. The replat area is approximately 2.43 acres and is zoned PCZD residential. Pine Court is the sole access to these five lots, and four of the lots are bound on the south by land associated with the commercial development to the south. City-owned open space bounds two of the lots to the west. The site was originally subdivided, pardon me, via the enclave final plat in 1986. It is now subject to the 1987 replat of the enclave. There are three families requesting this replat, the Yarnells, the Neslands, and the Bowens. Two of the lots have been vacant since they were platted in 1987. The Bowens purchased Lot 17 in 1996, and in December 2021, they purchased Lot 16. The Yarnells purchased Lot 14 in 1996, and in December 2021, they purchased Lot 15. The Neslands purchased Lot 13 in 1995, and during construction, it was discovered that the foundation was incorrectly poured and wouldn't be able to meet the required side yard setback. To fix the zoning nonconformity, a small portion of Lot 14 was deeded over to Lot 13, but a replat was never applied for or approved by the city. The Bowens have applied to create the new Lot 17A by dissolving the lot line between Lots 16 and 17. This would result in a 59,564 square foot lot and would require a modification of Section 161650 of the subdivision code. Because the site, the size of the lot would exceed the maximum lot size of 40,703 square feet as imposed by the enclave PUD. The Yarnells requested to create the new Lot 14 by dissolving the lot line between the old lots 14 and 15, which doesn't require any modification of the city subdivision regulations. The Neslands are requesting the lot line adjustment between the old lots 13 and 14 to create a compliant lot. Each of these require a vacation or change to the existing drainage easements, again, an exhibit of which is going to be brought to the city council for a final decision. The only aspect of the application that staff finds to be inconsistent with city subdivision regulations is the creation of the new Lot 17A. The enclave PUD establishes a lot size maximum of 40,703 square feet, and the new lot would be 18,861 square feet larger than permitted. The applicant requests a modification from the regulations to allow a lot larger than the zoning allows. However, the context of this request doesn't meet the approval criteria for a modification. Modification criteria are based on whether there is something unique about a lot in terms of topography, or shape, or size, that would make it difficult for a lot to be developed, and whether the modification would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district within which it's located. In this case, there is nothing unique about lots at 16 or 17. Considering the average lot size in the enclave is 11,920 square feet, staff finds that a 59,000 square foot lot doesn't protect the character of that established neighborhood. Staff proposes a conditional approval where the applicant submits a revised plat that either shows the lot line between the old lots 16 and 17 remaining the same, or, which is depicted here by the red line, that's the existing lot line, or the lot line being only adjusted so that both new lots comply with the underlying zoning. The applicant has already indicated that a revised replat document will be submitted prior to a hearing before the city council, which shows the lot line being adjusted so that both lots 16A and 17A are compliant and do not need modifications. Staff analyzed the application and its modification request against the subdivision and modification criteria of the Louisville Municipal Code. Staff finds that the application would comply if the applicant revises the replat so that no modification is required. The commission now has options, it may agree with staff's recommendation or reach its own conclusion. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Resolution 1, Series 2023, with the following condition, that prior to a city council hearing, the applicant shall submit to the city a revised plat that either relocates the lot line between lots 16 and 17 so that both lots comply with the lot size standards of the enclave PUD, or maintain the location of the existing lot line between lots 16 and 17. This concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you again.
Thank you, then, as we move into questions for Lisa, I think we're all eager to hear, initially, has the applicant agreed to this condition?
Yes, the addendum number one, part of what I said that to you, give you a heads up earlier rather than later, he's been diligently working with his surveyor to create a revised replat, and he'll go into it further in his presentation, but yes.
Perfect, all right, any additional questions for Lisa this time? Not Lisa, Elizabeth. Wait a minute, she's there, all right, yep.
Oh, thank you. I had a question, you said that this does, could you show me the specific code that this does not comply with?
Sure.
Whether, because I had a question on whether or not the modification criteria actually apply.
Sure. So.
You said 161650?
Yep. And 1624, so the modification criteria, if you're looking for the actual criteria, 1624.
Right.
30.
But I was wondering, which is the criteria that would require a modification?
Oh, sorry, so what's happening is that they are requesting a lot in its final condition that does not comply with the underlying zoning.
Right, which is the zoning, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, the enclave PUD. So that PUD is what established the development standards and lot size standards for that part of the world.
Okay. So it is my understanding that if I'm reading the modification review criteria, this is when we're looking for modification of the code, and we do not need to apply the modification, do we need, I should ask you, do we need to apply these modification criteria to a change in a subdivision plat? Because I understand it doesn't apply to the subdivision plat, but it seems to me that the modification criteria only apply to when we want to change the code, when they're not, sorry, not when they're changing the code, but when they want to change compliance with the code.
So Chapter 16 is the subdivision regulations, and it allows for modifications, and the criteria for that are in Section 162430. And so those are the criteria that, among, there's other criteria about compliance with basic design standards. So all of that is what staff used to reach the conclusion about the lot size exceeding what is allowed by zoning, and therefore the modification.
This is, this is a modification.
It would require a modification.
Therefore, we have to apply.
That's correct, so if you read the sentence right at the top of the screen, modifications for a proposed subdivision shall be submitted and reviewed as part of the subdivision application in accordance with procedures set forth in all of these titles, but if you scroll up a little further, it basically says if you're doing, if you're approving a subdivision plat that doesn't comply with any of the provisions of Title 16 or Title 17, to which the PUD is subject to Title 17 zoning, right? And so, and that is a zoning obligation set forth in the PUD for the maximum lot size. So since the proposed lot exceeds the maximum lot size, it needs a modification from the requirements in Title 17 which require compliance with the approved PUD. Does that get, that's the kind of chain of code.
Do we have any additional questions for staff at this time?
Go ahead, please.
Commissioner Troy.
Question, Elizabeth. Did staff or applicant provide any information or assessment on the impacts for stormwater? So there are two requests to vacate drainage easements between these two lots. Being a cul-de-sac, is there an assessment, a corresponding assessment that talks about any of the drainage impacts that that would have to all of the five lots?
This application definitely was reviewed by Public Works staff, and the vacation easement exhibit was also reviewed by them, and Public Works staff has commented and given direction to the surveyor to adjust accordingly. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And to further weigh in on that one more piece, so when any redevelopment or regrading happens, part of the building permit submittal is requirement to submit a grading plan to ensure that any revised grading that changes over time complies with the easements.
Commissioner Hefner.
Yeah, I think my only question is, just looking at how Lot 16 is sort of geometrically, it already has a very small street frontage, which I assume is one of the reasons that it was not developed to begin with, and maybe the applicant can tell us more about that. Is there, and I don't know if this is a question for you or not, is there a way to redraw the line so that they both, both lots comply, and Lot 16 has meaningful street frontage such that it would ever be developed? I mean, is it really a lot that we think is ever going to be separated from Lot 17?
It's, it's possible, it's possible, I mean, from a geometric perspective, the code discusses that cul-de-sac should have longer frontage than what appears today. Staff has been unable, in doing research, to find out how it is that this lot achieved this geometry in the archives that the city has access to. We really can't find the story to explain how it ended up with a, you know, about 25-foot wide frontage. Given a lot of that size, however, with the amount of space behind that cul-de-sac that it has to work with, staff feels pretty comfortable that a single lane drive aisle can easily be developed. It doesn't need to be a 20-foot wide apron like most suburban, you know, pull right up into your garage style. Drive aisles need to be, on a lot this size, you could drive forward on a single lane and have it flare out onto the property. And we've encouraged the applicants to talk with the fire department about their standards if they had concerns about the developability of that lot, given that narrower frontage. We suspect there are likely other issues involved as to why this lot has remained vacant over the years. I don't think the ability to put up an apron in a driveway is the limiting factor.
Okay, that's really helpful, thanks.
Any additional questions, Commissioner Howell?
Elizabeth, can you comment on the, if we did combine Lots 16 and 17, what kind of construction would we be allowing on that? It seems like a pretty large lot, and imagine there could be significant construction changes there.
Sure, so today, the enclave does not have any lot coverage maximums. So in theory, in an extreme future, you could have, you know, a building going all the way to the setbacks on this lot. So back when, and I should say, in the context of the Marshall Fire, in the immediate couple months after, the policy decision that was reached by the city council regarding what to do about the hatchwork of regulations across the city, some subdivisions have lot coverage maximums, some have nothing and just have setbacks. The direction that city council gave to Director Zuccaro in crafting the quick summarizations that staff pulled together for fire survivors to use, was that the city was not going to impose any new additional standards or restrictions on these subdivisions, and leave alone the standards as they were. So staff is tending to go in that direction and say, these, this is part of that world that was impacted by the fire, and the policy, as decided upon by the city council, was to not impose new regulations. So what we have here is a lot that could house an office building. But I will let the applicant go into more detail about how they are thinking about mitigating that. They are, there's a note on the plat today that could remain, but it would be kind of extraordinary in imposing a limitation on the size of structures in the lot. And again, I'll let the applicant go into more detail about their thoughts about how to mitigate that.
Additional questions, yes, Commissioner Troy.
So just to follow up based on that comment, in that extreme circumstance, and I'm going to ask the question maybe one more time, did staff in Public Works run calculations for stormwater management if the entire nearly acre footprint was built up with non-permeable surface to deal with that amount of runoff?
No, and that would not normally be a part of a subdivision plat process. Again, like Lisa said, it would happen at another stage where we would be forcing the, not for, requiring the engineering team of the development group to ensure that it complied with all of the city design for drainage criteria.
We do though, through the building permit process, review process, the Public Works Department is dependent, or indicated, depending on the scope of any new development that's on that lot that may have additional stormwater fees based on, you know, impact to the stormwater system. So we haven't made any determination of those at this time because there's no development proposed, that would all happen through the permit process.
I should, I should say, the applicants will go into more detail, but their goal the whole time was to keep the, that large lot, the old Lot 16 vacant in perpetuity. And again, I'll let them go into more detail about their plans for that.
Great, additional questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for the presentation, invite the applicant up. And if you can, begin with name and address once.
Good evening, I'm Tom Yarnell. I live at, or lived at 1222 West Pine Court. That house was burned in the Marshall Fire. I'd also like to introduce the co-applicants, Patty and John Bowen, who live at 1217, 1216, 1214, sorry. Seventeens and addresses are confusing, and Carol and Rich Nesland, who live just south of us at 1224. So this is just an aerial view of the enclave before the fire, showing, right, the houses that did exist there before the fire, and lots 14 and 15. 14 and 15 were bought by a family when the enclave was first created. That family had owned them continuously until December, until November. 15, lots 15, 16, sorry. Numbers to get confused with. That family had owned 15, 16 since enclave inception, and then at the end of 2021, decided to sell it. They had always talked that they were going to build a huge compound on those two lots. Right, they never came to the city and tried to find out what it would take to do that, but their plan was always build a big, a big compound on those two lots. Those two lots combined are 1.42 acres, so bigger than what 16 and 17 would be, would have been if combined. We've all lived in the enclave for many, many years. The Neslands and I, and us, for more than 26 years, the Bowens for 10 years. We and the entire neighborhood have enjoyed the views from our own houses and the views up that corridor, across the Davidson Mesa to the Flatirons. Right, that is why we chose to buy those two lots, is we wanted to maintain that, because we wanted to preserve our views, and everybody in the neighborhood has enjoyed those views living in the neighborhood. So yeah, we bought the lots. A lot of conversation has been on the previous owners who owned that, lived out of Louisville, they took horrible care of the land, they let weeds get long, the fence was falling down, they were very poor stewards of the lot. When we and the Bowens purchased the lot, we spent two weeks extensively cleaning up the lots so that it would be a nice, beautiful portion other than what it had been. And then, of course, within a month of buying the house, the Marshall Fire came through 50 of 56 homes in the neighborhood were born, were burned to the ground, and eight of 10 of the homes on West Pine Court were destroyed. On that note, because specifically, our house and the Neslands were very close, right? Their house had been built close to the property line, some of our property was given to them, so they were very close. This is a picture we got from a video the firefighters had taken that shows our house pretty much engulfed in flames, and the firefighters are there not to put our house out, but to try and keep the Nesland's house next door from burning. Eventually, they failed, the Nesland's house did burn down, but the Nesland's house, because it was so far on its lot, there was a big space between their house and the next house, that house did not burn. And because of the lots between us and the Bowens, the Bowens' house didn't burn. So having space between your houses is critical for fire mitigation. So the land use application, prior to buying the lots, we met with city staff, and then after buying the lots, we had our pre-application meeting to discuss, is this possible, could we do this, would the city approve it? Our initial discussions were that, yes, this would probably be okay. But they pointed out, right, that was their opinion at the time, the ultimate decision comes after full staff review, and you and city council have the ultimate decision on that. We lost our houses in the fires, the Neslands, as we were preparing to do this, realized that their lot adjustment had never been properly replatted, and the planning commission or planning team said, well, you may, you probably need to fix that if you're talking about building a new house. So they jumped on board, they are actually rebuilding now, it hasn't been held up, but they needed this to be done as well. It has been a very long, hard process to get all the documents, work with the surveyors. The surveyors, of course, have been slammed with site surveys, and so we waited months to get into them, and then weeks and weeks for corrections, of which there were many of them, and so all of that was very painful to get to October when we finally had all the documents. And so all of that was very painful to get to October when we finally had all the documents and submitted for the land use. After staff referral, there were a few minor corrections. Unfortunately, in their final, preparation of their final report, as Elizabeth has said, they came to the conclusion that they felt the large lot, new lot 16, 17, did not meet the requirements. And so put in the condition that Elizabeth has talked about of figuring out how to do this application without violating the PUD standards. So based on that, the Bowens, right, we had a lot, we discussed this at length. The Bowens eventually agreed to drop the request for lot 16, 17 consolidation because we felt we were facing just too much of an uphill battle, but have requested that their lot line be slightly adjusted. The original owners were audacious in that they built retaining walls and other features right on the property line. And so the Bowens would like to, without changing the front, which of course is non-compliant with the frontage width, slide the back back just to give them a little more clearance along their property line. The surveyor, we've contacted Flatirons, they're in the process of updating the plat. I actually got a very first version of that today. There's one or two minor corrections and we need to discuss the structural limits. But we have a plat, I will be updating that, talking with Elizabeth and Lisa about whether we go forward with structural size limitations and have that to the city probably in the next week. So here's just kind of a picture similar to what Elizabeth had of what we were originally requesting, which is combine the original lots 16 and 17 into the new lot 17A, that's 1.37 acres, it's a big lot. And then combine our original lot 14 with our adjacent lot 15 to make 14A, which is .75 acres, well within the PUD maximum. And then the Neslands are making their lot line adjustment to record the deeded movement of the lot in a legal plat that's recorded with the county. So our changes, so in that, we actually had a note on the plat limiting the size of structures that could be built on that property. We, of course, our intent is, our original intent was build nothing on 14 or 15, sorry, 15 or 16. We wanted to preserve the views. Our house burned down, our priorities changed a little bit and we would like to rebuild our house on the new combined 14 and slide it a little bit over the property line just to get that separation for privacy and for fire protection. So that's the one change in our overall plan is that now we would like to build on 14. The Bowens have no plans to build anything on lot 16 other than gardens or a small shed. So here's our new plan that complies with the staff condition of approval. We are not combining 16 and 17, but we are, as you can see, sliding the property line of 17 over just a little bit. Basically, we moved it from one survey landmark to the next one. It was an easy, an easy target, we just picked that. Of course, at the front, we would have liked to pull that further away, but because the frontage on lot 16 is 24 and a half feet against a code requirement of 35 in the cul-de-sac. So it's okay, it's grandfathered in, but if we tried to change it, then we felt that wouldn't be recommended or approved by staff. So we left the cul-de-sac point exactly the same, just swung the back back to give the Bowens a little more clearance for the features that the previous original owner had created. So now in this plan, all four lots, for resulting lots are completely compliant with the .934 maximum lot size in the PUD. And I just put this in, right, we had a full plat ready to go based on staff recommendation. I now have at least draft A of the new one, which I believe myself and staff can resolve very quickly and have that in place. And of course, there's a lot of reasons we would like you to approve this. My wife and I are certainly motivated to do this. We can't build a house until this is resolved. And we were significantly underinsured, we can't design that, we couldn't afford to design a house if you didn't approve and design a house if you did approve. So we're kind of waiting to find out what happens to actually be able to move forward and try to rebuild our house. The enclave in West Pine Court has been a beautiful, quiet, serene place to live with fantastic views. We want to maintain that, as I said, our goal is to not have anything built on lot 16 and the remaining portion of 15. We want to maintain the aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood. The enclave was never intended to be high density. Housing, traffic and parking have long been a problem on West Pine Court. Saying we want to build two more houses up there would just exacerbate that problem. The two vacant lots, as I said earlier, combined are 1.42 acres. That's been sitting there for 35 years. And the people in the enclave have enjoyed that open space and view corridor out to the, out to the mountains. And for a number of reasons, the entire neighborhood is aware of what's going on, they're aware of all the details. And there's people here, people online, we've received nothing but positive support from all the people within and right within the 750 notification radius and in fact, the entire neighborhood. So we respectfully, respectfully request that you approve this subdivision modification so we can all move forward and we thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Great, we will open up for questions at this time of the applicant.
Well, I did, so in, early on, staff recommended that we, to show intent, put some form of structure size limitation because certainly there is a concern, somebody could come in and build something really, really big there. And we absolutely didn't want that. We put in a structure size limitation for the two combined lots of 10,000 square feet during staff review. They requested we lower it to 7,000 square feet, including the basement and no more than 8,000 gross. And we happily made that change. We don't want, none of us want a big lot put in onto those. Another question was the stormwater. No calculations were done, but in the staff review, they did comment that depending on how much hardscaping you have, it could affect the stormwater. They also said that for any dissolved lot, we need to abandon any water or service that has been there for 35 years and requested a subdivision amendment that basically requires that we pay a $10,000 deposit to assure that that abandonment takes place. And we were fine with all of those things and understood that depending on what happened with 16 and 17, the stormwater charges could change. And so the structural limitation is still on the drawing. That's one of the final details that we and staff need to work out on what's the best path forward. But our goal is, we don't want a big house built back there.
Okay, and I heard from Elizabeth that you agreed to the condition and I saw the shaking of heads, but can we just get it from you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, originally, our original goal was to consolidate them. That was our goal, that's what we thought would be best for us in the neighborhood. But city staff found that that was too big of a lot and we are okay with not consolidating 16 and 17.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
That was my only question as well, but I just want to say thanks for the detailed presentation and really creative approach to all of this.
Thank you. Yeah, any additional questions?
So Tom, regarding this contingency that you're making, how much different is that from the original lot line?
It's, so up here, this is their original lot line. This is the new one, so perpendicular to the original lot line, at the very back, it is about 13 and a half feet.
So it seems pretty minimal from what I can see in the picture.
Yeah, yeah, we did, I mean, the Bowens don't need more land, but they would like to improve their access situation because the original owners built things right, right exactly on the lot line. So this gives them, this gives them some room in the back and they're looking at other ways to get a little bit of room in the front that doesn't require making that frontage smaller than the already non-existent number. Another, another comment or question was, could the lot lines be redrawn to make that compliant? And I think the answer is no. The requirement is 35, this is 25, so we need 10 feet. The Bowen's house is 40, so you'd have to take 10 feet of their 40 and now, now they're 30 and they're non-compliant. Lot 16, sorry, 15 currently is exactly 35 feet. So if you move it one inch, it's not compliant, right? And then cascading down, right, the corners, the lots at the beginning of the cul-de-sac, we have on lot 14, 80 feet of frontage because of our unique position. But we'd have to significantly change all of the lots and figure out how to financially work out who pays for what and what do people get in with. So my first answer is no, they can't be redrawn to be compliant.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Any additional questions, Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, I'm really sorry that you lost your home. And I am really, I think it's fantastic that this is something that your entire neighborhood is here and it sounds like you, the neighbors are working together on this. And it would be nice to hear from your neighbors that are online to, that nobody is objecting to any of this because if it's true that you have that much support, I think it makes a lot, it has a lot of weight for us as commissioners. I have one question, does it make a difference to the Bowens, if it's okay for you to speak for them? Whether, is the end result going to be the same for them, whether or not they combine the two lots or just move the lot line? Is there a preferred, was it just done just trying to figure out the easiest way to move forward with the design? Or was it necessary for some elements of their design to combine the lots?
So the one elephant in the room that we don't generally talk about is property taxes. We have both, since we bought these lots, realized how Boulder County is valuing these lots at astronomical levels and taxing them at vacant lot rates, four times the residential rate. So part of our motivation when we first decided to buy them was, boy, can we do anything about the property taxes? The Bowens have been successful in at least reducing the evaluation from Boulder County Assessors Office and may have a path to get them lowered, but that was one of the key things is prevent anybody from building and not have, if they remain at the current levels, it's not clear that they could continue to own that lot. It's a concern.
Sorry, we have to ask you up to the podium so we can hear and it gets recorded. If you start with your name and former address.
Patty Bowen, 1214 West Pine Court. When we did successfully appeal the taxes this year, the county originally assessed the lot that we bought at twice of what we actually paid for. And so, and I know they had a new formula, they said this year. And at that time, there were very few empty lots in the city. And so that's why they were valuing it so high, even though it had been there for 30 years and had been on sale for, well, the one lot for almost two years and the lot that they bought and the one that we had was off and on for a year. And we were the highest bidder of a few other people for that and was half of what they valued it at. So this year, we got a break for this next year. We don't know where that's going to go. We, we have spoken with the Boulder County Assessors Office and if we, it sounds like if we can show them that we're making improvements on some of the lot to extend our yard, not just with grass, but you know, they said we could put a shed up, we could, you know, extend a patio. I wanted to put some gardens in. If, and you know, possibly a walkway from the street to the backyard, which we never had access to legally. That should hopefully suffice and the county may look at that and say, okay, you're using it as a residential lot. We will let you, we will rezone this or re-
They don't actually rezone it, but they assess it as-
Assess it as residential, yeah. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for that. Again, we had no, when John and I purchased it, we had no plans to expand our home, to build on it. We just bought it to preserve what we had at, you know, for everyone and for us, for our views, for the rest of the cul-de-sect. Because it had always been that way for 30 years, we had only been there 10, but, and so that's, that's our plan is we've never really wanted to build anything on it. And we don't want to see, as Tom said, anything huge put on there. So we hope to maybe live there for another 10 years if we, if we can. And, and then at that time, we'll, we'll hope that if, when we sell our home, that someone else would want to buy that lot as well. Just to preserve it as it is, they may want to build, someone else may want to build a house. But again, we're willing to put in a limitation on the size just to keep it from having a giant mansion put there. Does that help?
Anything else, John, you want to say? I'm Vivian Yarnell, Tom's wife.
Same address.
I'm sorry, 1222 West Pine Court, which is no longer existing. And we bought that lot next door at 1220 for 450,000 and Boulder County assessed it at 899 and they raised the taxes from six point something percent to 29%. So, but then again, we lost our house and so we're trying to combine those lots. We're under the PUD max size, hopefully that'll be okay. But, but that is, additionally, they have the same thing where they, they made it twice the value that we bought them for and then raised the taxes like four times. So that for us, hopefully we can resolve our problem, but for them, you know, that's if they keep the lot empty, that, that's a concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicants at this time? Please.
Yeah, pending discussion, I just wanted to start that I would like, it would be, it would be great to hear an affirmation from others in the neighborhood if you have those people available, if they wanted to speak. I'm speaking to the people who are maybe making public comments. And I also, I'm still stuck on the application of the modification criteria to the combining of these two lots. I don't know that we've, I've only been on this commission for two different, you know, from one other application for a subdivision where we had to modify, where the applicant requested a modification to the subdivision requirements. And in that one, it was, had to do with block length and the block length was written into our code. So they were asking for a modification of a code. And here, the actual block size is not written into our code, it's written into the subdivision plat. So I'm not sure that we need to be applying the strict, I mean, it's something for us to discuss, but I'm not sure we need to be applying the strict, if we don't have to apply the strict modification criteria, would you want to, would you be open to moving forward with your original proposal? Or would you prefer to, I don't know, I don't know what our commission will decide or what the city council will decide. But I was just wondering if you'd be open to- But I was just wondering if you'd be open to moving with your original proposal rather than the modified proposal.
So I think we need to leave that with staff to see if that's even under consideration initially. I don't even know that's a. Can you?
So in staff's interpretation of the code, the modification criteria applies in this case. Again, as we mentioned, again, the chain of it all is that the modification criteria applies when any code provision is not being met as a result of the subdivision. So the subdivision would result in a lot that exceeds the maximum lot size established in the PUD, which is regulated by Title seventeen. So because the PUD is a criteria, you know, because the PUD is under Title seventeen. The modification criteria, basically, it says you apply modification criteria when no provision of Title sixteen or seventeen are met, right? So if you have to, as a result of the approval of the subdivision.
And modifying the PUD was not an option?
So modification of the PUD was something we talked about. That would require basically approval of all of the property owners within the enclave subdivision for them to, or they would have to approve a new PUD for these lots. The modification is the much simpler path to amend the PUD, to amend the standard. Because to amend the PUD at this point is unless, you know.
Yeah.
And for the app, for them to amend the PUD.
And for the modification criteria, do they need to meet all or just one?
So that's a good question. We can bring that up during your discussion if you'd like. But it says in granting any modification for a subdivision. City Council shall find that the application complies with the criteria in all of the following requirements insofar as applicable.
Okay.
If you'd like to ask a question of the applicants, you can. Commissioner Krantz.
Yeah, I was. Would I would Mike, I guess I still have my original question. It seems to me, based on the tax situation, if you can speak for the Bowens or they would like to speak for themselves, that it would make more sense. You've tried every, you've tried to consolidate the lots. And I'm just trying to look for another path forward. And if it's something that our commission were to be able to figure out, would you, would it be procedurally okay to proceed that way without the condition?
To us, I believe we would still be open to consolidation. Is that fair, John and Pat? Or are you okay now with not?
Oh, sorry, we have to invite you up to the podium. We need to get it in the recording if nothing else.
John Bowen, Patty's husband.
Close enough.
Tried to reiterate our original intent in purchasing that lot was just to preserve privacy and views and thought the rest of the neighborhood would be happy with that. With our insurance that we, as long as we're able, physically able at our ages to live there. But no intent to build or see it developed that that new lot. The the lot line, the adjustment of the lot line, the way that ideally, we would have had a couple of feet, two or three feet at the front at the curb. Because we can't as long as, well, now that we owe that own that land, but previously, we couldn't even get our mower to the backyard without trespassing in the previous previous owner's lot, lot sixteen. So and the adjustment that Tom's made and drawn out now showing here the new lot line was really just to bring it into compliance. When we purchased it, we didn't even realize that it was already exceeding supposedly the the maximum of the PUD by like point zero one acres. It's after from what we heard recently, the idea that we would be allowed to combine and have a far larger lot, far exceeding that point, whatever. We just decided would not likely be approved. Yes, it would probably be favorable for us from a tax standpoint, but we pretty much decided we'd go ahead and keep the lot separate and just hope that we can pay the taxes for a few more years, really. Right, ideally with some improvements that we have in mind and speaking with the assessor in Boulder, made it sound as though there's a good chance that, right, it could get, we could get a residential designation by. Though we really need a shed that the Yarnells and we, the Bowens, need to maintain, mow this giant lot now that we have. So we need to have a tractor and at least have a structure to house that.
So it's so to clarify that the resolution has written with the condition as written as your preferred path forward?
Yes.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much.
So to further clarify, during our deliberations, when we we do not have any more input from you, the applicant. If we were to if we were to disagree with the staff's analysis and were to think, were to think that if we were to believe that the lots could be combined. You are, you will stick to withdrawing that from the application. You withdrew, you do not want to withdraw, if we, if it was part of our discussion, you would not want to withdraw your withdrawal of the the letter that you sent withdrawing the request for the combined lots.
Sorry, we were sorry, we need to get it on the recording.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to be just crystal clear about that, that our question, my question was really clear.
We had a bit of time. It's possible we might reconsider. But really, we want to get this resolved so that our neighbors are able to move ahead with getting back in their homes. We were blessed in that although damaged, our home stood. And we just grieve for all of the people who lost their homes and can can't can't even imagine how much they want to get back in. So we don't want, if by our proceeding going forward with combining takes any more time, we don't wish to take that time. So we're, yeah, we're prepared to stick with.
Oh, okay.
Two lots separate. And it's possible that the neighborhood, all that we've had, all all of this great support. Well, we have had a lot of support. I don't know that there are, wouldn't be somebody disapproving of that large of a lot. But we would do whatever is in our power to limit the size of a structure that could be built. Personally, I'd hate to see more than an eight thousand square foot house in the future down the road built on that lot. And I guess it's right now as it stands, that's possible, that could happen, but that's, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And so did you want to speak as an applicant? Well, we're going to open it up to public comment.
I just wanted to make a point you were poking at. Do you have support? And I believe Elizabeth has received emails from people in the neighborhood with support. I believe there's people here and online that are in support. And certainly, we've received emails from many, many people saying we absolutely support what you're doing. Either the consolidation or just going forward with the current revised plan. Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, Vivian Yarnell. We were told that that it could not be, those two could not be combined. And so they came up with an alternative. So I think they're they're a little taken aback today at you asking, do you want to go back to this? Because they were saying that staff didn't, was not going to recommend it. And so I think that's like there, you know, just kind of like, wait. We just got surprised with this December twenty ninth and that kind of hurried to come up with a resolution. And so I think that's where kind of the confusion and the answer comes from. So thank you.
Great, thanks. Then you wanted to speak as applicant? Yeah, please.
Building on those questions, Richard Neslin at twelve twenty-four. I appreciate the questions you're asking.
Sorry, just pine.
Pine Court.
Right, yes, thank you.
We're at, no, twelve twenty-four, we have a big pile of dirt.
Yes.
I appreciate the questions you've been asking, looking for a creative solution. So I thought I would add some data that might address that. Currently, the objection to expanding the two sixteen and seventeen is that it exceeds the code lot size. It also meets then the code requirement for the cul-de-sac. Whatever you call that, frontage road. So that was just a curious point that it would actually meet the code better, I think. Because that code probably has some implications for safety of the homes, I think. I don't know. The second is you ask about tax. And that's a very interesting history for this property. I only talked to the own previous owner of that several times. The reason it was never developed, he was an inventor trying to figure out how to make a new Post-it and never succeeded. So he never developed it. Until two thousand sixteen, he bragged about it being zoned agricultural, which we don't know however happened. And was paying less than, and I'm going to stay at exactly ten dollars a year taxes on one of those lots. Ten dollars a year. I don't know what happened in two thousand sixteen, but that was added. Now, your other question about community support. We have a strange phenomenon in Lewisville right now that all these little communities have these mailing lists, right? You can talk to everybody who you've never met. So everything that was sent to them about this is copied on the whole neighborhood. And maybe March of two thousand and whatever the last year was, twenty-two. There was a move to to redefine our our covenants. We have no HOA. We have a covenant. Most of it didn't know we had them even. And I was the one who administered, not authored, but administered the survey of the neighborhood. Over half of the, well over half of the respondents to the survey said they wanted no restrictions. They were in support of all of us deciding how we should live on our own. Now, they sent out the requirement, you put it up there, whatever, you have to announce this and put up signs. There was a bunch of emails that went around the neighborhood. I probably got a dozen this afternoon. Adamantly suggesting support for this proposal. So the neighborhood is behind it. The other part is, at one point, Lisa wisely suggested they talk about the benefit this would be to the community. There was a picture in the middle of Tom's presentation about the fire burning the houses. And if you notice from the as you looked at it from the right side, there was a bright orange flame engulfing their house. All that was fueling that flame was brush, just weeds. Until they bought this property, those same weeds were on those two lots. That owner did minimal to maintain the lot. So they're contributing in that way. They're also contributing aesthetically to all the people that cast by the cul-de-sac can see the flat arms. So I think there's a lot of ways they're contributing. They're going to pay a lot more taxes than the seven dollars a year. And the community, in my mind, everybody has voiced positive support for it. So I think that adds data and it meets a new cover or a new code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none at this time, then we'll take a five minute break. And then we'll be coming back to public comment. Great, thank you all. I will now open up the public comment portion of the of the hearing. We have some written comments, entertain a motion to add that into record.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. If I can ask people, we have the cards. If anybody who hasn't filled out a card wants to speak this evening, please fill out a card at the end of the table. How many cards we have?
We have one card at this time for this application. And then I don't see any hands raised. So anybody watching online, please hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine if you're on by phone.
Great, thank you. Can we invite up that?
Yep, Louis Delaware.
Hi, I'm Louis Delaware. I used to live at eleven thirty-nine West Enclave Circle until our house burned down as well. I'm all in favor of what these people want to do. They've done wonderful things in regards to revitalizing those lots. For example, the previous owners to try to show at least some sort of ownership of the property. Put a shed out, but then what they did was they put a whole bunch of black plastic on top of the soil that over time degraded. And then when we'd have winds, it would go into our yards. I live six houses, six lots away from where the Yarnells do, going this way. I would like to be able to see that property sixteen A be kept in perpetuity, if you will, with these folks as to being able to still have at least a nice viewpoint going out of the neighborhood. Not all of us are privileged enough to be able to live right along open space. And so it's a, it's a privilege for us when we go out walking to be able to see out to the open space through there. The other thing that I can't really see what would end up happening, most likely if whoever does, if they did sell this property because the issues in regards to taxes and like, I can't see somebody putting a short driveway there. It's going to be a very long driveway going down. Because if I was, if I owned that property, I put my my house as far out as I can. Okay? I mean, that's, that's, that's a, you know, reasonable thing to do, but it is a very long driveway. I don't know how how long that lot is. Yeah, think of plowing at least two hundred feet years of driveway, let alone the fact that that frontage there is less than twenty-five feet, twenty, twenty-four and a half feet wide. It's that's, that's again, a challenge. It's all right. The other thing is, you know, from a fire department standpoint that's been brought up earlier. For them to be able to get up that driveway all the way up to where they need to for that house may end up being a real challenge. So to me, I don't have any issue if this is what they want to do of trying to consolidate the lot. I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with them, what they're doing with that in regards to them creating that as residential code for taxation purposes. Yeah, I can't speak for the entire neighborhood, but I'm going to basically second what Tom has been saying in regards to the email chains that have been going on in our neighborhood over the last few weeks as to the support that majority of people have had in regards to making this happen. And I'm guessing some of the other people here tonight and also online will probably be saying the same sort of thing. So my time's up. Thank you for your consideration. Any, I'll take any questions if you have it.
Thank you for your comments. I see we have two people raising hands now online if we're ready to recognize them.
First up, we have Becky Nelson.
And it just, yeah, there we go.
Hello, this is Roy Nelson. My wife Becky sitting right beside me. We live at one one three four West Enclave Circle, just across from Louis Delaware. We've been here since nineteen eighty-nine, so thirty-four years now in this neighborhood. We're all in favor of what the Bowens and the R and Ls are proposing. As you've heard already, we've seen this area, that area open for a long time. It did fall into disrepair and we really appreciate what they've done to make that area look nice again. One option which I know has been brought up and I don't know what the impact is to the city. But is it possible to go forward with the Yarnells option combining those lots? So they can get to work immediately on getting their house planned for moving in that area. And then look at increasing the lot size to the Bowens so that they can achieve the tax basis for residential on that open lot. So you know. So, you know, that's, I don't know if this could be split into two options going forward. So the R and L's could immediately begin work on their house. And then if Bowens are up 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 to the effort to consider expanding their lot to achieve the presidential tax status.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And just to clarify, for the purpose of the hearing, we have one resolution before us that we're taking into consideration. So thank you for thinking of alternatives up.
Next up, we have Joan Truesdale.
Ms. Tuesday, you might be muted on your end. We have unmuted the mic at this side of things, so. Now our mic is showing as muted.
Looks like she's muting and unmuting on her end, but for some reason is not able to speak. Joan, if you want to try and call in by phone, that might be an alternative, or maybe log back on and log, log off and log back on the meeting. We can hold for a minute.
Okay. And Mr. Nelson, I see your hand got re-raised.
My mistake.
Okay, great, thanks. Just wanted to be sure. All right. That that is the remainder of of people indicating that they wanted to speak on public comment. We can stall for a moment here. There we go. All right.
Let's try one more time.
Yeah, looks like she logged back in.
Go ahead, Joan. You should be able to.
So we can see you toggling it back and forth, mute, unmute. That's on the Zoom. There's a possibility that on your computer that you're actually also kind of double muted. That's not anything we can see from here, though, fortunately. The other alternative, though, is to call into the phone number. Do you have access to a number that or that's on the website at this point?
Good question.
I I have it here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
It's a one, two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two. And the webinar ID is eight, two, three, one, nine, four, eight, seven, eight, three, seven. And you're going to need a passcode. Passcode is, it's going to be, I'm crossing my fingers, seven, seven, three, eight, five, eight. Should I go through those again?
While you're waiting for them to come aboard, I would also say, I I I'm speaking for them. I don't know if this is truly what they want to do, but I could say limiting the the square footage of the house, just like you've placed upon the R and L's as to like eight thousand square feet. So there's not a hideous big mansion out there. We don't need that. It's not the character of the neighborhood.
Great.
Thank you for letting me add that up.
Thank you. Sure.
So Joan just texted me. Can I read your text?
Certainly. Why don't you introduce yourself first?
I'm Carol Neslin, twelve twenty-four West Pine Court. Joan has said, would you please, Joan Truesdale, who lives at twelve, twelve twenty-six, I get confused about how the numbers go around, twelve twenty-six West Pine Court. Our home is next to their home and didn't burn down because there was a bigger separation. She says, would you please say that John and I support the proposal? Twelve twenty-six West Pine Court, we have been in the cul-de-sac for thirteen years, and there are three little bars, so maybe she's getting ready to say something else. Oh, so sorry, she couldn't make the technology work.
Great. Well, thank you for making the technology work in that case. Using what we can do with the text, right? All right. Thank you very much. With that, then, I will move into the applicant response and closing statement. So that would be you back up again?
Um, yes, I mean, we, it's been a long battle to get here. Originally, we were looking for consolidation of of both lots. It seemed like that was going to be a challenge based on city staff recommendations. And so we collectively had agreed to go forward with not consolidating sixteen and seventeen to allow this to proceed to hopefully approval.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any final questions for the applicant? Seeing none, then I would invite a staff response and closing statement.
Just want to say we really appreciate the collaboration between staff and the applicants on this effort. And we don't have any further comments other than just gratitude and their their collaboration and partnership on this.
Great.
I might add one more thing to that. So modification criteria before you tonight is really unusual with planning commission. This is really modeled after Board of Adjustment variance criteria, which typically is not the same criteria that you all use when you consider things like waivers. So waivers have a much different structure, right? And we usually look toward, you know, is the design proposed? The design and amenities result in something better than what the underlying code allows. Modification criteria is a fundamentally different type of criteria in that you have to start with demonstration of a unique circumstance. You have to demonstrate some sort of hardship related to what they're trying, you know, related to that unique circumstance. So if it's helpful, we're happy to pull up the modification criteria. All of them do have to be met. So that's really the basis for staff's recommendation is the actual criteria in the code, which, you know, probably didn't contemplate a request like this. However, this is the code and criteria that we have in place. And if it's helpful, I have the code section in set title seventeen, which kind of tracks all the way through to title sixteen for why we're at the modification criteria and why we believe it applies. So I'll leave it at that and let you take it from there.
Great. Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing. Well, any additional questions for staff, actually? Last chance. Yes, go ahead.
Sure. So I'm looking at chapter seventeen twenty-eight, two thirty. So seventeen twenty-eight is planned unit developments. And so really, this is the section of control of development after completion. So basically, what this is saying is that once a P U D is approved, that is the governing document and overrides any regulations, you know, in the underlying code because the P U D is the zoning for the document as it relates to the development standards that are in place. And then, thank you, Elizabeth. So, yeah, seventeen twenty-eight, two thirty, it's the very last one. Control of development after completion. And that if you want to modify the planned unit development, you have to go back through kind of the whole original process to start with, which is really complicated when you have this many property and landowners. And then when you translate that to title sixteen, so maybe, Elizabeth, if you could go up to title sixteen, I just want to point out the heading for the modification criteria, chapter sixteen point two four. Just the very first one, basically. The city council, upon advice of planning commission, may authorize modifications where a subdivider proposes a plat that does not fully comply with regulations in this title sixteen or title seventeen. So that's kind of the chain of order to which the modification criteria apply to this request.
Any additional questions of staff? All right, thank you. Seeing none, then I'll now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin?
I I can start or go ahead.
That'd be, that'd be great.
But mine will be short. I just want to say thank you to everyone for spending your Thursday evening with us and and making a great presentation and being prepared. And the creativity I mentioned before, looking forward to approving the resolution in front of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Moline.
Sure. I'm going to echo Commissioner Heffner's comments. I really appreciate the work and the time that you've taken to come here. I'm sorry for the loss that that many of you've had. And, yeah, I really appreciate you working through this, and I'm excited to see you moving forward here. I guess the one other thing I would say is part of our job, too, is to hear what's, you know, your your current situation. And then part of our job, too, is to consider kind of the longer term and what's going to happen with these lots in twenty or thirty years and stuff. And so it's it's for those kinds of reasons that I'm support i- in support of of staff's interpretation of the situation here. And so I'm going to be very much in support of the current proposal in front of us and and wish you the best.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, thank you very much. No doubt you guys will be good friends for many, many years to come. So I guess I'm wondering if the the commissioners, you guys are in support of the adjustment? Is that, maybe I'm reading wrong there, the adjustment to the proposal or the original proposal? Maybe you can clarify that in a moment. I guess the the adjustment seems pretty clear to me that that's.
It's proposal with the condition.
With the condition, right. The condition that we, the the lot lot line is slightly altered. So so it seems like that is is pretty straightforward to me that that con- conforms to all the requirements. I would also be open to accepting the original proposal if there was a limitation on the the development, the the square footage of the of the construction as well. It just seems like that lot sixteen is, the shape of it is irregular. I think in order to build a house, you'd have to build it pretty far to the edges of the lot. It's been vacant for thirty-some years. So I think that there are, although that wouldn't conform to the standards of the P U D, I think in this case, there could be an argument to do that, too.
Commissioner Grant.
Thanks. I I would, I kind of wanted to elaborate on that a little bit. I'm definitely in for in favor of approving this with the modification and letting the applicants move on to city council. But I I am rather than discussing the, I understand, I really appreciate Rich, Ms. Richie explaining the applicability of the modification criteria. And I do think that if we look at the modification criteria, it may be something that the applicant would want to proceed through to city council if we, or we may want to consider not putting the, not necessitating the, 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 the conditional approval. Because just to go through the modification requirements, there are unique physical circumstances such as irregularity, narrowness and shallowness of the property. So I believe that there is an argument that it meets the first modification criteria. And the second modification criti- I'm so sorry. The second criteria for a modification is that it cannot be reasonably developed in conformity with provisions and results in a hardship. I do believe that the tax situation could be considered a hardship. We may need to discuss that one more. And the hardship wasn't necessarily created by the applicant if there was a fire and this, and we really do want to consider the need for buffering space in between. It would not, I don't see, I I do see that this being a mega lot, you know, is not within what we have within what the P U D shows. But because this is on the edge of the development and it butts open space, I see that this could, I I don't think that this would impair the character because you could still maintain even distancing between the houses, and it would not require just a different, an alteration of the sidewalks or the streets. And this would not result in additional dwelling units. So I find myself in support of the the app of the application. And I do think that there's a potential way forward to consolidate those two lots, especially considering that you're willing to limit the development size. So just wanted to throw that out there. If anybody else wanted to consider these specific criteria, the only one that I think is, would be hard, would be hardest to say that it was be the resulting in a hardship, you know, whether or not we would say taxes is part of that hardship. I don't know.
I I would just offer that, as I read that section, you have to meet all of the criteria. It's not a
Right.
It's not a, it's not that kind of test, I think, that Lisa was explaining, where we look at a bunch of factors and try and weigh them and decide. I I read it as more of a sort of, you have to check each one of these boxes.
Yeah.
I I'm sympathetic to to what you're saying, that it would be nice if we could combine the lots. And I I just don't see how we can apply the code that way.
Yeah, the only one I don't see us meeting, that they could see us potentially not meeting, is number two.
Well, I I also find at this point that the land is perfectly buildable. It could have been built. It just hasn't been. There is curious history behind all of that. And it is what is it, but it is buildable and it remains buildable. And I I also think that it's important to think when we talk about in perpetuity, the only thing that is in perpetuity is the creation of these lots. So it's distinctly possible at some point that that additional lot will be sold off in the future. So. Commissioner Troy.
So to that point, thank you, Chair Rice. Thank you all for for coming and presenting tonight. It was very thoughtful, very articulate, and very, very well presented. The the cohesiveness that you all presented, you know, in in your in your accounts, as well as the emails that we've seen and the support is inspiring to see, especially in a neighborhood where people have lived next to each other for twenty-five, thirty years. So it's good to see that those relationships persist. I I think to the point of the application with the condition as noted, I would be in support of that that application with the condition. To the point of Commissioner Moline's statement about part of our charge to think about how things occur now and in the future. You know, my statement about the the support that you all have shown through your application of of everyone in the enclave. You know, it was a, it was a, it was a very difficult night for all of you, for a lot of people in town. And and you all have been living with that for the past year. I I think it's not surprising to see the outpouring of support as we are sitting here on the eclipse of the of the one-year anniversary of of everyone losing their homes. And I think that the statements that have been discussed tonight and presented that talk about, you know, fire safety, maintaining good separation in the neighborhood, maintaining the the views, right? It shows that cohesiveness and and everybody thinking about all the conditions that have been going on over the last year. And I think to that point, when we, when we consider all of the, all of the criteria around this application, you know, it's easy for us to frame our perspectives in what has happened in the last year. We think about setbacks. We think about safety. We think about how easy it is for a fire apparatus to get down a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot driveway to a house that's located at the back of a lot. And and all of those things are fresh in our minds, and it's easy for us to consider the application with that context. To the point that you all have lived next to each other for twenty-five, thirty years in some cases, you know, that's not always going to be the case. There are going to be sales of the homes and the properties, and new people are going to move in. And there's the potential, another ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road, that people who might buy these lots and people who might move move into the neighborhoods won't even know or remember what the Marshall Fire was. And when they come back to city council or planning commission at that time and they say, hey, we've got this one-point-five-acre lot. We want to build a ten-thousand-square-foot home. We realize that there's a restriction on this one lot that says we can't build over this size, but we're asking for reconsideration. You know, who knows what's going to happen at that time, and who knows what people will remember? And is that consideration at that time potentially going to impact the views that the rest of the neighborhood enjoys or the setbacks that provide that fire protection from different structures? You know, who knows what those people twenty fifteen or fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now are are going to say? All we can consider is the criteria, excuse me, all we can consider are the criteria that are presented tonight and the perspectives that we have, especially with that last year of of what's happened. So I just wanted to give that perspective, and and that's why I would be in support of the application with the condition as noted. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I also find myself in support of the application with the condition as approved. And for all the reasons that you've worked together and come up with a creative solution, and that it just makes sense for you. and that it just makes sense for you all at this time. So, and I think it makes sense going forward as well. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I would move the approval of resolution number one, series 2023, a resolution recommending approval of the minor subdivision, a second replat of the enclave.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Howe?
Can I clarify that? And is this with that condition?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Grantz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Chair Brice?
Yes. Motion carries. Good luck with moving forward. Thank you all for your time.
And good luck with the assessor's office.
Good luck with your house build.
Yes. With that then, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this next item. If you guys want to shuffle, I'll read the script in the meantime. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a planned unit development Centennial Heights Resolution two, series 2023. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations and testimony by the applicant, after these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine is calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Pooling of comments is not permitted. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I'll then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. Planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections, do we have notification, please?
The application was properly noticed per municipal code.
Thank you. And we have any disclosures from planning commission? Seeing none, I would invite your presentation, please.
Good evening, everybody. Lisa Ritchie, Fire Recovery and Planning Manager here on behalf of the Centennial Heights neighborhood. So as you all know, we were significantly impacted by Marshall fire. The image, the map before you, all the properties outlined in the dark black are the properties located within the Centennial Heights subdivision. For context, all the properties in pink were those that were destroyed by Marshall fire. So not the entirety of the neighborhood here, but certainly a good, a good number. The PUD was originally approved in October of 1990. There was a minor fence amendment approved in 1992. Again, the neighborhood has 120 single family properties, 39 of which were destroyed by Marshall fire. The current PUD that's in place regulates all fences to some degree. We'll talk about that in a minute. And as you may remember, I believe it was back in September, city approved ordinance 1838, which provided a citywide exemption where a PUD requires a wood fence that directly abuts a home in order to allow kind of a break of the chain of transmission of fire. So we've already done that exemption. We'll talk a little bit about how that relates to this neighbor or this PUD amendment in a minute. This is a little unusual. However, we have confirmed with the attorney that the staff has the ability to present a planned unit development without authorization from all of the property owners. So we do have that authority at your discretion. However, we wouldn't do that. We wouldn't put you in that position unless staff believed that we had a really good consensus with the neighborhood on the PUD amendment before you tonight. So we held a number of neighborhood meetings. We did an online survey. The neighbors collaborated and met together. So this is really a neighborhood driven proposal that we have the authority as staff to bring to you and planning commission and city council can approve without their legal authorization. Just want to clarify that as this is a little unique. So we're going to just talk a little bit now about the actual fence regulations that are within the Centennial Heights PUD. So within your packet is the full PUD itself. But I just have highlighted here the fence regulations that are on the existing PUD. So the first one, all of these are located on the cover sheet. They're, they basically apply to the entire neighborhood. Solid fence setbacks are noted. This note remains unchanged. So there still would be setbacks for solid fences. This note, this next note is pretty substantive. So within the entirety of the development, there's a language that says solid fences should be a maximum of six feet in height and basically be constructed of rough cedar. So the neighborhood has elected to remove this requirement. In addition, staff and city council, you know, we already talked about kind of that wooey exemption, which basically would exempt the street facing fences, if you will, from this code. And so there's, at that point, you're really regulating side lot lines and rear lot lines, which are not visible to the public. The final one that we're going to be removing is the, on certain lots, there's a kind of an overlay double requirement that privacy fences be located, you know, inside of the rear property line. It's not a concern. It's not really, it hasn't been an issue in the neighborhoods. We're going to dispropose to remove that regulation. So sheet two, sheet two is actually the site plan for the PUD. And this, within this portion of the PUD, there are really specific fence designs for certain areas within the neighborhood. So we'll talk about the northern site first. So I don't have a context map on this slide. But the north property line, which shoot, you canceled my mouse. That's on the, the area that's north of Mulberry Street and that area is labeled remains unchanged. So the current PUD standard is a 42 inch high California chain link fence. Those neighborhoods that abut that, you know, that a border that all collectively agree that that's their preferred standard. To leave that standard in place, along the Vista Lane side, which abuts the power line trail, they currently also have that 42 inch California chain link fence requirement in place. Those neighbors would strongly prefer to require non-combustible fence materials. Continuing to work through with the neighborhoods, the specific language. So for now, the PUD amendment says wood fence is not permitted. But prior to city council, we're going to be refining that to get a better idea if we want to specify a certain material or if we're okay with wood not allowed, or if we're okay with combustible. We'll be collaborating with some of the county staff who actually administer wooey codes on a regular basis. We want to make sure that we've got this note right. But the intent is non-combustible. For now, the, the language says would not permitted. On the southern border, which abut Century Drive and Dahlia Street, the current standard is a six foot high cedar fence. Those neighbors, those fences were not impacted by the fire. And so we're going to be leaving that standard alone. And then along the western side, the current standard was a six foot high solid wood fence. And they are going to, we would propose to remove that standard and have it just be regulated under the, the municipal code. And really the rationale for that is that, that western border, when this neighborhood was originally designed, that was very visible for McCaslin. The subdivision to the west of there didn't exist yet. That was a perimeter fence at that time. So having continuity, you know, or surmising here was probably important from an aesthetic perspective. That's no longer the case. It's an internal lot line at this point. So we're proposing to dissolve that regulation. As discussed further in the staff report, unlike commercial development, we don't have specific design standards for residential development. So really we're just relying on the standards that were embedded within the PUD and then the overall kind of neighborhood character standards, things like that, when we think about PUD amendments. So no explicit criteria here that requires a waiver. It's really at our discretion, your discretion, the neighborhood's discretion to determine what is neighborhood character and what's appropriate for this PUD amendment. With that, we're recommending approval of this resolution. There are a number of neighbors online and in person here tonight that I'm sure would love to share their opinion on where we're at, at this point. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go back to any of the slides.
Thanks, Manager Richie. I have one question and it's, it's, uh, it's related to the lots that are adjacent to the power line corridor there. And I'm just, this, I'm not opposed to the direction we're going here. I'm just curious why, if you have an understanding of why the neighbors there would, would want, would want to move away from the 42 inch California, which I would think we would think would be more fire resilient.
That's correct. So I think, yeah, I mean, there, the California chain link traditionally has kind of a wood frame that is supporting a traditional chain link structure. Some of those neighbors are here tonight, but there were a couple of reasons beyond the combustibility to go to a six foot high solid fence and, or a six foot high fence. And a lot of that had to do with keeping dogs in the yard.
Okay.
And some potential for privacy. So we're not really regulating that design other, we're changing the allowance to go up to six feet. But I will let them share more specific.
Okay, no, that, and that'll be good to hear from them. I'm, I was just curious if they're, if we'd heard some reasons and, and so that makes good sense to me. So, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Choi?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a question, how did staff engage residents? And what was the response rate for the neighborhood in terms of?
Those are really good questions. So we started with, we back up a little bit. So after Marshall fire, staff developed relationships through neighborhood liaisons that each neighborhood with fire, that was affected by the fire, kind of self-appointed a handful of folks that would engage with staff on a regular basis for information sharing. Through that process, we learned that fence regulations were a concern. And so neighborhoods basically kind of again, self-appointed, maybe a fence committee that staff collaborated with. With Centennial Heights neighborhood, what we did was we held an online meeting that we did our best to make available to the entire neighborhood via Zoom to talk about what is a PUD, what are our standards, what would be the process to change it? We had an online survey through Engage Louisville that the neighbors, again, tried to do their best to make sure the entire neighborhood had access to it. I don't have the numbers offhand. I could get those during public comment. The response rate, I would say generally was fairly high for homes that were affected by the fire and fairly low for properties that weren't. So that's a generalization, but we did get really good engagement from the fire affected properties, not so much from the others. And we followed that up with, I want to say, an additional online meeting to go through the results, make sure we heard folks write that we had consensus. And then individually, the properties along Mulberry, those neighbors all met collectively to really make sure they were all on the same page. The Vista neighbors did the same thing. So there were kind of small working groups that staff met with kind of the overall fence committee.
Thank you. Just one follow-up question, just because of the variability between the different fences, heights, geometries, materials that are being proposed. Did staff put forth any consideration to maintaining equity? So that there's not necessarily any undue burden on one particular set of houses that face one area that have a certain restriction versus a house that's in a different location?
That's a really good question. So staff generally, my role throughout this process, I think, was more of an advisor of here's what the code is. Here's what the PUD regulations are in place today. Here's how we might approach a consideration from like neighborhood character, impact on surrounding neighbors, you know, no fences 10 feet tall, things like that. But really the outcome from my perspective was really driven by the desire of the neighbors and I would let you ask questions for them when they come up to confirm.
Additional question? Yeah, go ahead.
One, one very last question I pose. In, in the staff recommendation, would staff be amenable to just having the verbiage specifically talking about non-combustible material as opposed to saying wood not allowed?
We had that first and the reason why I'm hesitating on that is because what exactly does non-combustible mean? Like vinyl, is vinyl non-combustible? It melts, it doesn't necessarily burn in the same way wood does. Steel, concrete, probably more truly non-combustible. So the neighborhood's preference is non-combustible. At least that's the language that we had up until, kind of worked through some questions at the staff report. But we really want to refine and get that regulatory word correct to meet their intention. So I'm fine with non-combustible. I just want to make sure we all know to what degree we're regulating.
Thank you.
So on that note, then what are other examples of non-combustible six foot high fences?
So, you know, we've looked at a lot of options and the neighborhoods have looked at a lot of options. And you all are going to see a bunch of PUD amendments potentially over the next couple of months from neighborhoods. There's a steel fence product that some neighborhoods are looking at. There's kind of like a black wrought iron fence product, precast concrete. Although, you know, traditionally see that in like this type of scale. That might be more of a sound wall or neighborhood border against Jason to an arterial. I think those might be pretty expensive. Trex and vinyl are less combustible than wood. You know, they tend to kind of dissolve rather than, the rate of fire transfer is certainly a lot less, but they still burn. So that's kind of the clarification. So, and really, when I think about this, I'm thinking not necessarily about these property owners. But to your point, 10, 15 years from now, when the next property owner comes in to replace the fence, just making sure that we're really clear about the expectations for combustibility.
Additional questions? Commissioner Howe?
I just want to build on that comment that you just made. Are individual residents able to change the type of fence on their property? Or is this, are we going to maintain, are we going to maintain the expectation that this is all consistent along that whole corridor?
So that's a really good question. So where there's basically the only portion of the neighborhood that's going to have a consistent, specific design after this PUD amendment is the northern border, which requires 42 inch high California chain link. And then the portion along Century Drive and Dahlia. Everywhere else within the neighborhood, there would be no specific design standard.
So just taking that extrapolating that one step further. If I move into the house along the power line and I say, I want a six foot high non-combustible and I, I can put up a bunch of cement, a whole cement, listen, according to this, potentially you could do that.
Correct.
And the next neighbor moves in and he says, he or she says, yeah, I want steel. So we're going to put up steel. You, I think we're removing some of the requirements and some of the consistencies. That's a, maybe it's something we should discuss a little further that there could be. And then does one neighbor like the other neighbors' fence? So although we're removing some, and, and I'm not opposed to the removal of the wood, but the challenge then becomes, how do we make that a consistent product, non-combustible product?
That's a good question. So this neighborhood determined that consistency along this corridor, or at least particularly these property owners, was not a priority. I think partly that might have to do with the fact some of them are rebuilding, some of them aren't yet. They're still working through budgets. They're still learning more about fence design options. They maybe aren't there in their decision-making process. They're been working through permitting. So they are okay with lack of consistency in design. I also want to note that while along some trail corridors, we have highly consistent fences. On this section of the power line trail, there's not a lot of consistency in the surrounding areas. Staff's not necessarily concerned that inconsistent fences from the neighborhood level is going to be dramatically different than what you already see on the corridor.
Do you think this creates a precedent? You say we're going to see a lot more PUDs. I imagine this is not, this is not the last one for neighborhoods.
I would say generally no approval that planning commission makes that's a precedent for any other approval because the circumstances are always a little bit unique. So I don't think you have to necessarily have a concern that if you approve some flexibility on this one, that your hands are tied on a request for flexibility that you don't agree with next time.
And then one last question. So this also applies to the fences that run in between, not necessarily facing the street, but in between. What kind of liability are we looking at when one person moves in and says, I'm going to make this a cement fence? And, and it's between the two houses, but it's their fence, you know, one fence faces out. So that would be their fence. So that actually is part of the adjacent neighbors border. What's the liability in that? Cause we're giving a lot of autonomy to potentially very different styles of fences here.
So that's a really good question. Just a little bit about how we review fences generally when a fence permit comes in. So when a fence permit comes in, we often get asked, can I force my neighbor to share in the? to share in the cost? No, that's not a, I can't force that. Can I force the nice side is on my side and the ugly side's on their side? No, I don't have any ability to regulate orientation, cost sharing, things like that. What we regulate is to ensure that the proposed fence under the permit is entirely located within the property boundary, not even on the property line unless there's shared agreement with both property owners. From a liability perspective, I'm not aware that there is any liability that the city would be undertaking by approving a fence amendment. This neighborhood, if this language gets approved, is really similar to really large portions of the city. For example, Old Town doesn't have any fence standards at all. So really, this would fall back to the underlying code and would be really decisions that would be made at kind of a neighbor to neighbor level. And so whether or not that's something that you as planning commission feel like you want to weigh in on. Yeah.
Just to clarify my comment, legal liability, and maybe this is a question for the attorney. Someone moves in and changes the character of your your yard by changing the fence that is their fence.
So we can't authorize somebody to work on a fence that's not theirs. So it has to be, you know, on their property. If somebody changes a fence that's on the abutting property or the adjoining property, that would be a civil matter. There wouldn't be any liability that I can think of that the city would be undertaking by removal of this design standard.
But this point, right, you could do what you want on your property. That would not prevent the neighbor from saying that they wanted to have a certain look and feel and put that fence up directly adjacent to that existing fence from that their neighbor put up that they didn't like. So that that's always an option.
Yeah, I guess so.
All right, Commissioner Moline, no, all right, Commissioner Krantz, no, any additional questions for staff? All right. And then we'll open public comment now. Yeah. We'll open public comment. Do we have, we don't have written comments on this one? Yeah.
Yeah, Elizabeth will manage.
Great. And yes, if we can, you have the comment card?
We have comment cards and we have one hand raised online.
Great. Now, yes.
So for in person, Mr. William Johnson.
Look, it's not turned on. There's a little button at the base, maybe.
Green light, go. All right. All right. Well, good evening, Commissioners. My name is William Johnson, and I'm at 108 Vista Lane. So I'm on the eastern border of the PUD. And I do want to speak to some of the questions that were raised, because it did impact my family and I personally with the California style chain link fence, it did unfortunately allow for our large breed dog to have very quick access out into that open space, where unfortunately, not every constituent within the city of Louisville actually adheres to keeping your pet on leash. So there is a lot of running around, you know, by my family and I to catch, you know, said said large breed dog. In addition to that, we actually see coyotes actually traversing that open space corridor quite frequently. I actually witnessed it jump over a fence, go snatch a dog and take it off. So having a six foot fence is actually a little bit more of a leap for that coyote wildlife, which we, you know, we are certainly within their, you know, their space as well. So having a six foot fence was one of the characteristics that we as neighbors talked about having because of that kind of personal situation. The other kind of characteristics that, you know, again, having our homes you know, burn as a part of the Marshall Fire, we all have various different insurance situations, right, financial situations, which unfortunately prohibit us from having a consistent fence, you know, standard, because some people are maybe more severely under insured than others. So we as neighbors discussed that as an impact and having flexibility with regards to materials was one of the hallmarks for the conversations we did have with city staff. The other, you know, characteristic that we were very adamant about was, you know, we actually did see fire transmission through the California chain leak fence through the wood timbers. So having that wick up to our houses and, you know, helping, you know, perpetuate the fire was not in our best interest. So we do not want to build back with that fence. And I will personally go on the record and saying, I hate that fence. I did not like the aesthetic at all. So there you go. It's now on the official city record. My neighbors know it very well. So it's a running joke with us. But in all seriousness, though, we did want to put the characteristic of the materials used would be fire resistant. You know, we, you know, being laypeople do not have the right verbiage to maybe nail down exactly what I think the city staff was alluding to earlier about making sure that the materials that were choose chosen effectively mitigate that potential for wicking of the fire propagating it from house to house. And so that's, that's where we're coming from as, you know, concerned neighbors. And I hope that that give gave all the Commissioners here a little bit better perspective as to why we're asking for a little bit more flexibility. And, you know, to, I think, you know, city staff member Richie even mentioned, across the corridor, there is absolutely no standard. There are various different fences of varying different sizes and materials. And we see that because it's right across the open space from us. So that's our experience. And I don't know if you have any other questions for me? Hopefully answer your questions.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Why don't we jump to somebody online here?
Exactly. Mr. Dave Barron. Dave, if you can, there you go.
There we go. Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry, I just had the delete button pop up to unmute. So my name's Dave Barron. I'm the homeowner of 835 West Mulberry Street, which is right along the west portion of Centennial Heights. I'm going to start off by thanking Lisa and the rest of the planning department for spending so much time coordinating the surveys and the multiple meetings on Zoom and just basically trying to help rally and walk us through the process of the multiple and variable requests you guys have in front of you for the different fence heights of the neighborhood. I'm particularly on the west side, I'm kind of in the northwest corner on that cul-de-sac. And for us, we actually, we have pictures from our neighbors of the day of the fire. And unfortunately, we also lost our homes like many others in the community. And we have pictures of the fire basically acting as a wick from our neighbor's home, which was on fire, and then gradually transmitting over to our house, and then further on down the street. And so I know that many neighbors in the community, specifically our neighbors directly next to us on the west side, some of them don't have any desire for fences at all. They kind of prefer the more open feel instead of having a continued contiguous boundary around your backyard. They kind of like the feeling of seeing all the neighbors more of like a mini open field between homes. And for them, they also don't want to be obligated to have this large six foot cedar fence behind their homes, you know, just like we would need to have. We unfortunately do need a six foot fence in our particular situation because we have a dog who's an escape artist. But it just wouldn't make any sense to us having proof and evidence that this this cedar material destroyed our home previously, having the idea of putting up another cedar fence is just asinine to us. I mean, if people want to do that for cost reasons or aesthetic reasons, that's fine. But we're also grossly under insured and don't want to rebuild our house and go through this entire scenario again, by having another future cedar fence also act as a wick and destroy the house again. So we just don't want history to repeat itself. And we greatly appreciate you guys' consideration of removing those fence requirements behind our house, because as Lisa pointed out, it really is fences directly between neighbors at this point, because there is a community and a neighborhood directly behind us. So that's at least our position of the story, kind of our piece of this puzzle. So thank you again for the time tonight. And thank you again, Lisa and the planning commission for taking the time to push this forward on behalf of the neighborhood. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Mr. David Pomeroy online. Yes, hi, David.
Hi, thank you so much for taking the comment. And just a huge thanks to Lisa and the staff for taking the time to put this together. It's so important for us. We are, I've got an echo, sorry. Our house is 112 Vista Lane and was destroyed in the fire. And I have a photo of our house with the fence on fire coming down from 110 Vista, right before the house caught. So like the Barron's, it seems pretty clear that the fences really did us in in our neighborhood. So we'd really like to build back with a non combustible fence, like a steel fence. And I just wanted to express my support for this resolution and really thank the city staff. You know, we, I actually am one of the people that like the chain link fence, unlike the Johnsons, but I am quite content with having different fences at different houses. It doesn't bother me in the least that people have different preferences. And across the way, there's lots of different fences. So I think having looser regulations on the fences is going to be good for everyone in the neighborhood. And I wholeheartedly support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
We have one card coming up.
Here, yes. Wonderful. Thank you. If you could just start with your name and address also.
Good evening, Ed Duel. I live at 794 West Pinion Way. So I'm kind of on the open space in this area, but not within Centennial Heights. And I think it's great that the city is thinking about the future and, you know, what we can do to be better protected against the fire. So I just have a few points to make here. The first one is there's a mention of the California chain link fence. And as an option, I mean, that kind of has a very industrial look, like a kind of like you're protecting a substation or a prison or something, and just maybe open up the option of what's called a welded wire fence, which is based like, you know, two by four slats. It's just a little bit more neighborly looking, I think. So I don't know if that could be into consideration as opposed to the the chain link fence. Just just a point to consider. The second thing is the cedar fencing. When I first moved here, I just thought they looked beautiful. They looked fantastic. And I didn't realize what a danger it was. And somebody made the comment, the only difference between cedar and gasoline, when you put it in a bucket, is that the cedar doesn't really slosh around as much, but it is extremely combustible. And and so when we make the consideration of non combustible, well, non combustible means like concrete and steel, right? So I think I think we need to be very careful about the wording about what's acceptable, because there's wooden, large wooden fence posts around the rec center, which are like probably six inch diameter, they're wooden fence posts. And some of them burned, but they kind of burned very locally. It wasn't like it was falling apart and then just flying because the cedar was burning and then just flying in the wind. Whereas these large wooden posts near the rec center that burned, I think they just burned and that was, that was it. They just burned locally and they didn't really spread the fire. So in that sense, that wood is combustible, but it's not really a danger like the cedar was. And so I think we need to be, you know, maybe careful about how we define that. And I don't know if you guys literally can make a recommendation of like, here's six or eight different types of, you know, fences that would be appropriate, because, you know, maybe wood is okay, if it's the right type of wood. I think cedar is pretty bad, but some of the other types of wood might be acceptable. But then maybe there's like a list that could be created of, you know, steel or concrete or maybe even vinyl or something like that. I don't have the solution, but because some people are going to want to have privacy fences for various reasons. And and sometimes maybe the wire fences will be fine. So I just, I just think the word non combustible, we need to be careful about that because that could drive us all into a solution that people really don't want. But those are my points, just for consideration. I'm really happy to hear that this is being talked about because we do need to build back better. Otherwise, we'll be talking about this maybe, hopefully never again, but we'd want to avoid it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have additional commentary, yes?
Next is Michael White.
Yeah, thank you all for considering this today. I don't really have much.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Michael White, 106 Vista Lane. This man's neighbor. But yeah, we lost our home in the Marshall Fire as well. I think it goes without saying, we want to do everything we can to prevent that from ever happening again. Something like a fence regulation or change in it seems a pretty simple, low cost and easy way to do that. I just will add, I'm hoping that the city in general can take a look at fences overall. We're all kind of interconnected and fencing is obviously an example of being interconnected. And frankly, a little disappointed that we aren't changing some of these regulations over time. I think that no one should really be putting up a cedar fence in Louisville, moving forward, because we saw it those days. We all have stories of seeing the fences cause additional fire. I know that's not considered today, but just something to keep in mind moving forward. But yeah, I'm really glad that the city is looking at this. And I thank Lisa and staff to consider what kind of naming convention you want to use for these fences, combustible, non wood, what have you, and trust that. But yeah, I'm just all in favor of this particular proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate your comments and your time.
Sorry, there are no other hands raised online right now.
All right. Then I would now invite city back up for closing.
I'll just hang here. Just one other point. Appreciate the feedback on the, you know, the dialogue on the fence design. Just want to remind Planning Commission that that was really the neighborhood's preference. So it's not necessarily staff's desire. That was really the neighborhood preference to keep the California chain link in place. So I would prefer that we continue with that recommendation.
I might actually, I would actually like to follow up on that one specifically. So the welded wire, I have some seen some uses of it around town. They may or may not be compliant with whatever may or may not apply to those locations.
I can check with the neighbors to see if they are okay with, you know, chain link or welded wire, if there's a way we could, you know, because you're right. And when you walk around a lot of neighborhoods and you see California chain link as a standard, some folks are actually constructing it with welded wire. It comes in sheets. It's easy. It's accessible. It may be. So I think we may see some of that out there through this, but I'll double check and confirm.
Additionally, as it relates to that currently says four by four. What if somebody wanted to do something more stout, six by six, that and yeah.
That's a
It was given as the definition. I don't know if that's the requirement, and whether that's a requirement of minimum four by four.
So
It was just on the slides that we had, it said four by four.
For the for the post?
Yeah, for the post.
For the California chain link, it says that? Ah, good question. I will, we could probably remove. I'll look at that. We'll, 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 we'll take a look at that before we go to city council, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then also oftentimes those also had a horizontal on the top. How do you see that being addressed with something non combustible? And you would, would that, does that remain as part of the definition of California chain link?
If someone came in, are you asking if someone came in maybe with like a Trex frame?
Four by four posts with chain link 42 inches high, and they did not have that wood on the top.
I don't think we would find that that complies with the design of the California chain link. I think that, you know, the neighborhood prefers consistency. And I think that would require the kind of that wood post frame along the top.
And then there's also potential that there are treated wood products. I don't know if they're available as exterior in like a PyroGuard classification. But that's something we need to look into.
Yeah, there are treatments that you can apply to wood that I've heard.
I was thinking about something maybe manufacturer. So it'd be part of a pressure treatment.
Yeah.
So not something that needs to be maintained. Stay away from that. But that there might be a product out there that it would be less combustible. What? So at that point, though, I think vinyl can be combustible. So I think there's a lot of devil in the details of that definition.
Correct.
As it currently stands, though, any other questions for staff?
I have a quick question. It on the power line, it says that the on the picture, it says that the six inch high fence would would not permitted. Are we just removing the requirement to put cedar there? Or are we actually saying you cannot put cedar there?
The PUD as currently written would preclude cedar because it says would not permit it. But again, I intend to continue to work with the neighborhood to really define. I intend to continue to work with the neighborhood to really define combustibility as from a regulatory perspective before we go to city council on this term.
Because in some, I guess, just to clarify, in some, this is, as you say, where it says solid fences shall be maximum seventy two inches in height or rough cedar, and we're deleting that note. But someone could actually put rough cedar in that if unless it's specifically stated that there's I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think about.
Yes. So
You know, in 10 years, we don't want to look in the lens of this one year.
So the way the PUD is structured right now with, and I can pull up the slide, maybe we'll do.
And I'll just restate that question, just so it's clear for everybody out there. We're, we are taking away the requirement of the rough cedar in some instances. But we're not saying you can't replace it with rough cedar. We're just saying it's not mandated.
That's correct. With the exception of the two locations on the perimeter. So the north again requires California chain links. You couldn't replace a six foot cedar. And then the non combustible, but everywhere else, any other fence, someone could elect to do cedar if they choose. There's a substantial number of existing cedar fences that didn't burn in the neighborhood. Some might be replacing them. It's just as you don't have to.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Just to make sure I understand, but along the power line trail, you cannot put wood and you could not, so what would be the option for somebody who wanted privacy would only is cement the only option or vinyl? If, if you were to go with the words non combustible, vinyl would be an option.
Well, I'll confirm with the neighborhood if they're comfortable with vinyl combustibility, but there are solid steel fences. There's a number of neighborhoods and some fences going up following Marshall Fire that are a steel product that would be non combustible. That are solid.
Is, is it? Is it an acceptable idea to staff to craft the language around a performance based specification such that you could, you know, put limits on a flame sped, flame spread rating of the material as opposed to, you know, to Commissioner Hile's point saying no smoking allowed says no smoking is allowed, but smoking is also allowed, right?
That's what I intend to collaborate with, with some professionals who actually administer these codes and understand, I think, again, with the neighborhoods. I want to reflect their preference for combustibility level, but then we put in some regulatory language that isn't burdensome for future staff to try and understand that's, you know, but yeah.
Well, I mean, and, and aside from the, you know, very custom, high end, you know, fence material that's a one off. You know, everything that's a manufactured product is going to have a flame sped, flame spread rating. So that's a easy thing to do, you know, because potentially, right to, to one of the commentators point. If you wanted to put in an iron wood fence, that's still technically wood, but it's not going to burn.
Flame spread rating, that's a good idea. I hadn't thought about that, but you're right. There are ratings for some of those products and it might be that we look to some sort of industry standard for that.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing. Thank you, Lisa. I'll now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Would like to
Go ahead. I'll be, I'll be brief again. I've been trying to come up with a joke about good neighbors make good fences and I don't quite have it yet. But I do think the sort of stakeholder bottom up approach here is great. Thanks Lisa for facilitating all of that. You know, this feels like probably the right, the right solution for this neighborhood right now. I think probably we all have some work to do and council has some work to do in thinking about, is there a code amendment to the fence standards that we need to consider just sort of more generally for all new fences. So when that fence is being replaced, we're not putting up stuff that's going to become a tinderbox. This doesn't feel like the right decision point for making that decision, given the sort of limited geography and the neighborhood collaboration and all of that. But I think at some point, whether it's us or council or both, there's obviously needs to be consideration of you know, do we revise the fence standards in the code?
How are you feeling on this?
Proposal? I, I'm, I'm feeling strongly in favor of this proposal.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe?
Well, I think I'm definitely agree with the fact that we need to, this is in the right direction, which I think Commissioner Dietrich was talking about. We need to think about limiting combustible materials to reduce our, our fire susceptibility in the future. We have to be careful that we don't do just knee jerk reactions. I think Commissioner Troy said it really well before where we, we look in the lens of what's happened in the last year and we say, wait a second, we got to do something different. But we have to look long term and in 10 years, 20 years, how do we look back and say, yeah, we did the right thing? So I, I think there was an idea about proposed by a citizen about ideas about fences that would work, that would be less combustible than cedar. And I think that that would be something that would be valuable to be provided on a city wide level for the requirements for fences. I think that this does open up a little bit of discussion about what, what can be built between houses and how people are going to be working together to build fences, not only on the back of their properties, but between the properties. I think that, that, that there can be some maybe potential conflicts there of one neighbor saying, yeah, I'm not sure I like that fence. Another person saying, well, that's my fence. That's not your fence. No, that's my fence. Well, I don't like that fence. So that kind of, that kind of thing, we assume will be worked out and everybody's amicable. But looking back in 20 years, will we have made the right decision? So I think this is the, the right, maybe the right area for this PUD. Hopefully it doesn't set a precedent for future PUDs and maybe we can think about on a citywide level as to changing some of the recommendations moving forward.
How are you with the proposal?
I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say. Still considering it.
Yeah. So I'm in, I'm in support of, of the resolution before us and I appreciate the comments. I'm, I'm very consistent with, I, I find a lot of what Commissioner Heffner mentioned very fits very nicely with, with my perspective on this. I, I, I think I guess my sense is I, if I, if, if I was to offer some advice to, to staff and city council, I think maybe guidelines more on materials for like broad city scope and application to try and get at fire safety. That kind of a direction feels better to me than like design guideline kind of level stuff for fences across the town, you know, I mean, I, I, I think each neighborhood has its own flavor and own kind of thing that it wants to see. And some neighborhoods, mine in particular, mine, for example, there are no, you know, there's no subdivision guideline for what can go on with a fence. And, and so I think just having some freedom around the design, but making sure that, that when people rebuild fences, they're doing so with materials that are that are non combustible. I think that would, you know, if I was to kind of send a message, that would be mine. That, that would be the direction to kind of pursue for, for future kinds of whatever resolutions, regulations, wherever the city wants to go. But again, I'm, I'm in support of this. I really appreciate the work that, that you've done, Lisa, and working with neighborhoods and have really appreciated people coming out tonight and giving their comments. So thanks.
Yeah, once, once again, it is amazing how neighborhoods have come together, neighbors have come together in the aftermath of this fire and have coordinated with the help of staff, their responses to this. I'm generally in favor of it. I did agree with Commissioner Troy that rather than the second revision, rather than saying require non wood fences, it would be better to have a more. I was originally thinking it would make more sense to have, if there is an industry standard, like a fire spread combustibility rating that that makes the most sense to me because that's the bottom line, how combustible is it? But at the same time, I, I, I think we have to supplement it with what Commissioner Moline said, people don't, you know, might not, might not read it and say, well, what does that mean? Does that mean vinyl? Does that mean wood? So now that I'm listening to my fellow commissioners, it would be good to have, you know, an explanation along with the fire rating, but I think the fire combustibility relation rating would be really important for that second revision rather than non wood. So that's it.
Commissioner Troy?
Thank you. Again, like everybody else, I think I do appreciate the outreach and the coordination with people in the neighborhood. That's, that's a huge part of, you know, making sure that we're making the right decisions. Just reading through the way the, the draft resolution is stated and it does say non combustible in there, I, I do. I, I, I do generally support the approach and the recommendation to remove the requirement for cedar, right? Get it out of there. But like some of the other members, I, I do think that verging towards as, as we get to that final language that would go to council, doing it in a way that is more prescriptive based on the performance criteria rather than, you know, specific materiality. And, and that's, that's where I would be fully behind.
Great. I also find myself in favor of it at this time. But to echo that actually precisely, a performance criteria for the, for the flammability. Because that's what we're looking for and that's the cleanest way, I think, to get there. And then when it comes to reevaluating welded wire. I wonder, I mean, part of that look is a certain transparency. Right? That you see, you're able to see through that fence, even though we may or may not like the look of chain link, it provides a transparency. And so maybe that needs to be part of a kind of a performance criteria. Is that that visibility? So right, we have wrought iron as in our wrought iron or actually more likely it would be aluminum that would be looked like wrought iron. So I think it's important that we do stay away from the listing material specifically. That'll, I think, end up causing troubles for us down the line. And so I would encourage you to kind of bring it to that point for council. So.
Do you feel strongly enough to add a condition under the resolution for that? A non combustible?
Um, I, I, no, I'm, I'm okay with it. Just verbally, I think you'll bring it to.
I appreciate the feedback and we'll certainly take it back to the neighborhood and get their input on. I'll let that be a neighborhood driven decision again, before we go to council on their level of comfort related to performance based standard. But I really like that approach and I think that's measurable and something that doesn't preclude a future material we can't think of today, but meets their underlying intention.
Two, two years ago, I don't think any of us would be talking about the supply chain issues that we're facing right now. So, you know, requiring specific materiality as opposed to performance based specifications kind of gives us a wide road to drive down.
Great. Any additional deliberations? All right. With that, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution number two. Series twenty twenty three, a resolution recommending approval of an amendment to the Centennial Heights planned unit development amendment regarding fence regulation. Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Troy.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes.
Commissioner Heffner.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes. Moshe Karies, thank you all for your time especially. Good luck with all of it moving forward. All right. I think we'll be able to move very quick. Well, actually, you know, what's that? So we're gonna have
To continue in some
Yeah, we'll have to have a motion for continuance. Then we have some other discussions here. Unfortunately, I need to take a quick, short five minute break, a true five minute break. Get recorded. And reconvene. So as far as procedure on this one, Lisa.
Yeah. So at this point, I'm requesting a continuance to the February ninth planning commission meeting at six thirty PM. Just some issues have come up at the neighborhood level that I'm not sure if they're going to result in a change to the application or not, but we just wanted to pause. Also, we would have run out of time tonight anyway. So a continuance may have been in the books and, but intend to do some reconfirming with the neighborhood. If the application changes, we'll send out a new notice, let folks know or we'll pause it. But for now, I think a continuance is an acceptable next step.
And that's for resolution three, series twenty twenty three, plan unit development amendment, cold creek ranch filing three and cold current creek ranch filing three replat A.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion for continuance.
Motion. Continuance.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Heffner. All, we're still on roll call.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Heffner.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Troy.
Yes.
Moshe Karies, thank you. With that, then we'll open it up to planning commission comments. And this is just kind of an open time. If you had something you wanted to speak to about around under over or like a public event you wanted to publicize that was appropriate. So any commissioner comments?
You know, I just wanted to thank the Louisville Rec Center for extending their membership for fire survivors or people affected by fires for another year. I, I think that's really a great benefit to the cities, the citizens of the city. So a great thank you to whoever made that decision in the city of Louisville for doing that.
Great. Commissioner Moline.
And I would just say welcome, Commissioner Troy. It's great to have, great to have you here. So.
Yeah. Thank you. All right then, we do have more than usual staff comments.
Yes, we've come to that portion of the agenda, which the planning commission sees at the beginning of each year. In front of you tonight, in particular, is resolution number four, series twenty twenty three, which reestablishes the same public notice posting locations. You're reaffirming it's part of the city's charter that the bodies go through this process of reaffirming the locations where notices are posted. So the bullet point list in the agenda is an accurate depiction of what's happening today and what the resolution proposes. Want to draw your attention to the open government ethics pamphlet. There is a twenty twenty three edition that was shared with you via email. It was also attached to the staff report. Meredith Math, the, the city clerk is going through and doing trainings for folks. So just want to make sure you have access to that. If you have any problems opening it, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll make sure you get a copy of it. And the same thing, the item C nine C is the twenty twenty three meeting dates, just to make sure everybody has that easily, readily available. What it, it's a little bit of more detailed than the calendar, the event calendar that the city maintains on the citywide website. The only dates on the city website are your standard first Thursday, this twenty
Second Thursday, yes.
Sorry, thank you. It's only nine twelve PM. Your meeting dates, nine C item that's been provided to you tonight talks about the, the rollover dates or the overflow dates and kind of goes into more detail about what to expect in November and December around the major holidays. So we, we invite you to discuss, ask questions of us and or simply move forward on taking action on resolution number four.
Great. Any questions or deliberation on item? B, resolution for series twenty three regarding posting locations?
Entertain a motion?
Yes, please.
Move the approval of resolution number four, series twenty twenty three, a resolution recommending that the following locations be established as the official locations for the posting of public notice of all twenty twenty three Louisville Planning Commission meetings.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Troy.
Yes.
Commissioner Krantz.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes.
Commissioner Heffner.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes, yes. Excellent. Thank you all very much. So we have now two potential items. Excellent. Thank you all very much. So we have now two potential items for our February meeting. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all.